The Pledge of Legions?
My Pledge of Legions, in the light of the United States of America, in the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Any comments or questions or changes to the agenda? Nothing? Move to approve. Okay. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous approval. Second item then is the minutes from our past meeting on March 12th. Any changes or modifications there? Hearing none? Have a motion?
I'll move approval. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? No? Okay. Very good. Thank you. All right. We have one public meeting or one public hearing on our agenda this evening, and we'll start with that then. It's the Edendale Parking Expansion and Site Improvement by Edendale Residents, Inc., located at 16700 Main Street. It's a request for a planned unit development concept amendment on 3.25 acres, planned unit development district review with waivers on 3.25 acres, zoning district amendment within the RM 2.5 zoning district on 3.25 acres, and a site plan review on 3.25 acres. Is there a project proponent who would like to come forward and tell us more about your project?
I agree with that, Commissioner.
Okay. If you could also tell us your name, spell your last name, and your address of residence.
I will. Thank you. My name is Wade Johnson. I'm with Outland Builders. That's J-O-H-N-S-O-N. My residence is 2547 Onyx Drive in Shakopee, Minnesota.
Okay.
And I'm Barbara Kuhlman, K-U-H-L-M-A-N, the Director of Operations for Twin City Christian Homes. I'm owner of the Edendale property. My home is at 6173 Holly Drive in Lionel Lakes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Please go ahead and give us an overview of your project and highlight any special issues there may be.
All right. I will do that. Our project basically consists of two parts. There's a west part and an east part. The west part is fairly minor. It's cleaning up some issues that have been around the property since its original conception. It was left with some berms in the back that were too steep to allow for vegetation growth. So we're proposing to install some retaining walls to level the grade in that area, promote drainage from that area. I have that shown on this plan in front of me. I believe probably what's of more interest to the commission tonight is probably the second part of our proposal, which is to add 22 additional parking stalls to the northeast portion of our property. Currently, there are 61 residences, and there were 40 parking stalls built with that in the original. We're seeing a younger demographic of individual that is leasing here, so they're having driver's license, needing to go places. For the past several years, we've been informally parking at Eric's Bike Shop. Eric's has rented a space to an orthodontist. They have, on certain days, quite a large number of people parking there, and it's really not practical to continue to share that parking as they need all those stalls. Our parking -- let's see if I can find a better representation. There is an easement on the southern portion of this property that is owned by Prairie Six. That easement is controlled by them. We've approached them about parking there and were rejected. They're continuing to hold that for potential parking need in the future, and we're forced to then park immediately north of that in anticipation that the neighbors would not want a parking lot any closer than they would need to have it. We have pushed our proposed parking lot as close to that easement as we can do without encroaching upon it, and have left about a 24-foot buffer between our parking and the neighbor to the north. In another part of this project, we're slightly increasing the width of some existing stalls to accommodate those residents that need that walkers and things like that to get in and out of cars. Not technically handicap parking, just more accommodative parking.
Mm-hmm.
Part of this project includes a garage on the northeast corner. That garage will be used for minor repairs such as window screens, appliance cleaning, tool storage, storage of seasonal items, Christmas items, that kind of thing. And drainage for that parking lot will be accommodated by a rain garden where I'm indicating right here.
Okay.
And that concludes our presentation.
Is there a setback requirement from that permanent easement?
There is not.
Okay. Mr. Fransen, you want to go through the staff report for us?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Parking in the garage is a permitted use in the RM 2.5 zoning district, and the parking in the garage meet the setback requirements. The garage meets the exterior material requirements. When you have more than five parking spaces that are adjoining a land use that's different, we have single-family, to the north and west, the city code requires screening. So we took a look at their plan. They're proposing to screen the parking with the trees that are required for tree replacement. We felt that needed to be supplemented based upon our views that we looked at from the adjoining properties, which we think would do a better job of being in conformance with our requirement for screening. So we prepared what the staff report, what is called Exhibit A. It shows a combination of other conifers and shade trees to supplement what's proposed along -- that would be the north property line. And so we're recommending approval of the plan to add the parking and add the garage subject to revisions on Attachment A.
The project proponent, any comments about Attachment A? Is this something you've seen and are comfortable with?
Yeah. In fact, in assistance here, I put a copy of it up. Just some initial comments. The highlighted trees are the ones that have been added by planning staff. Those on the western portion, to describe a little more closely, this parking lot is bordered on the north by about a three-foot to four-foot-high retaining wall, and then a berm that goes up about that much higher in this area as well. I think headlight screening is very adequately accommodated here. I don't know that these trees add a lot, and there's also a lot of natural growth in there, and to put these new trees in, we would have to remove a significant amount of existing vegetation to do that. I have less of a comment on these because obviously that area isn't constructed yet and can't physically see it like you can this area.
Mm-hmm.
Some of these trees appear to screen a garage, which maybe doesn't seem to be the real intent, but I don't believe we have any, you know, great resistance to it.
Right. Right. Okay. Commission members, any questions or comments? Anyone? Yes, I guess I do. Mr. Fransen, on the first page of the staff report, there's a comment under site plan that says the proposed location for the parking and garage is in the wooded part of the property, an area designated quote-unquote "as park" in the 1983 approved plan. Can you comment on that, on what that designation as "park" meant, or what the intent of that was, if we can read intent back in 1983?
I don't know. I couldn't find anything clear in the record of what that was for. It may have just been a description that this was just going to be an open wooded area that people might just enjoy and walk to. My guess is, since the single-family homes were there before this was built, that they were probably thinking of that as a buffer zone, and so maybe this was just the word they referred, decided to use rather than "buffer." There's -- we didn't have a development agreement back in 1983. There's just a resolution that said it's approved according to a plan, and the plan is pretty much what's out there today, but for, in parentheses, they called that "a park." So my guess is, if you live to the north and you're looking across, maybe the intent was they want to see the office building or parts of the commercial area that are a little bit further to the east, and because of the height of the building, that might have been some mitigation for that, although we didn't have a requirement in our ordinance for tree replacement or transition back in 1983.
Okay. Thank you.
So part of the screening, part of the additional plant material replaces some of that tree mass that's there. It eventually grows into it, and part of it is for screening purposes. But what it really comes down to is, you know, how do the adjoining property owners feel about what's there? What are they going to see? And if there's another way to do this that's as effective, I mean, we're open to those things as well.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thanks. Okay. Other comments? Okay. As this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and ask questions or make comments? If you can, please step up to the microphone here and tell us your name and spell your last name, please, and your address.
Okay. My name is Barb Aygan, and my husband Ike. We live at 7701 Meadow Lane. We've been at this address for 43 years, and that Prairie Village Mall is directly behind us and has been there for nearly 30 years, I think. I remember the meetings we had with the developer of the mall at that time, and we didn't like -- told him we didn't like losing our privacy, and they were very understanding and accommodating. They put up a cedar fence and also planted trees, but they died. We are basically shielded by the trees that were already between the mall and the underbrush that was also there on our property. And at that time, and in the summer and in the fall, we're protected from seeing the mall. In the winter, we can see it all. The most bothersome noises are from the garage or the garbage trucks and the banging dumpster lids at 3:00 in the morning. Several days a week, in the winter, it's the front end loaders removing the snow from behind the mall and in the parking lot, and also that's around 3:00 AM or earlier. This has been a good winter because we didn't have much snow. These will be concerns at Edendale as well. Just behind the proposed parking lot are our neighbors, the Bouvays, who are on a winter vacation and won't be home until next week. We understand Jerry and Anita's concerns as their bedroom is in the back of their home, and they would hear and see vehicles and see lights if they are installed in the proposed parking lot, as it would be directly behind their home. These issues all affect our property values as well and need to be carefully considered. We are opposed to this parking lot and possible garage so close to our properties.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else with comments? Yes, go ahead.
I want to know if you received Jerry Bouvay's letter?
Yes, we did.
And you've read that? Okay.
We definitely did. Any other comments or questions from the audience? Okay. Well, oh.
I'm Mary Beth Rowena, R-O-J-I-N-A. My property is directly north of that parking lot. I as well have two bedrooms that will face the lights and the noise, and you mentioned the berm that is not taking on growth. That berm has plenty of lush natural plants that are -- that grow naturally in that area. There's a lot of wildlife. I feed the birds, and I have numerous species of birds coming in the yard, woodpeckers which thrive on trees, some of them that need -- that need partial dead wood to make their holes to breed. We have foxes and raccoons and opossums. There's a lot of wildlife in that area, and I am not looking forward to a parking lot having that berm torn down. I hear Highway 5 every morning, the start of the rush hour in the morning and the start of the rush hour in the evening. I hear Jake brakes on truck. If that berm is knocked down, the volume will increase. I'll have to have my bedroom windows shut all the time.
The berm that you're referring to, exactly where is it? Is it right behind Eric's Bike Shop, or is it on your property lines?
It's on our property lines, behind Eric's Bike Shop, and behind the adult apartment building. In there, and I also hear every time someone parks in that adult apartment complex, I hear when they hit -- I hear the beep when they, you know, lock their car. So if that ground, if it's leveled, the noise volume will increase. There is a feeling of privacy somewhat in our backyards. If that's removed, there will be no privacy. There'll be car lights. There'll be people just looking right into my windows, into my yard. I value my private backyard.
Sure. Okay. Well, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The project proponents, have you looked at other options to try to screen lights and potential berming or fencing, or other options to try to make this more separate from the neighborhood?
We have. We felt that the evergreen-type screening would be the most natural and the most welcome and the lowest maintenance type of screening that we could provide in that area. So that's -- we felt that was the best and highest screening we could do.
Hmm. How about relocating the garage to more the southern part of the parking lot rather than the northern part, and also moving it closer to that easement? It looks like you mentioned, I think, you're 15 feet back from the easement.
It's interesting that the garage has come up. We felt the garage itself would act as screening for any other parking, and so having it on the north side would be the most beneficial. If we really haven't considered putting it on the south side, it's probably something we could certainly look at.
Same. Okay. Any other -- yes, sir?
Just real quick, I know we went over the berm issue really quickly in the beginning. Can you just kind of revisit that so I can understand that a little better?
I can. I believe one of the folks that spoke lives in this property.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Thank you. And we're not proposing to change any of that area whatsoever. No grading, no work, no anything. It was -- planning commission suggested the planting of additional trees in there. We did have a few trees. I'm sorry. We had a few trees planted, but no grading, no removal of vegetation or anything like that. Our work was all limited to a line that's east of our current parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
There -- it maybe gets a little complicated, but I'll make a layman's attempt here. There's a pretty significant berm that separates Eric's from our proposed parking area. There's a hill in this area. There's then a natural low spot, and it begins to go uphill again in this area. So we're not through definite trying, but through accident, we're putting the parking lot in what is kind of the low spot of that area, which helps with screening. It keeps the parking lot, or the, I'm sorry, the headlights lower, which reduces the amount that shines forward into people's homes. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sort of. Thank you.
Okay. Just a moment. Other comments here or questions here?
Just a quick question relating to the berm in terms of the difference in height from the property line to where the parking lot's proposed. Do you have a number in terms of the height variance there? Maybe on here somewhere.
I would say a couple of feet. And we can do a berm in that area. The challenge is if we do a berm, then we remove more of the existing vegetation, more of the trees, so it's that challenge on what's doing the least harm.
Mm-hmm. Okay. You had another comment, ma'am?
I'm wondering if--
If you could come up to the microphone, please, and--
I haven't done this before.
That's okay.
I'm wondering if they're planning on having also lights back there in the parking area.
We are. We are proposing three 20-foot lights with downcast per the city's requirements.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions? Yes, sir. Alex?
Can I just add? It seems like the residents behind Eric would really like, I mean, at least one or two mentions of a fence.
Right.
I don't want to just dismiss the fence. Is it just a cost issue, or you mentioned the natural screening, but if the residents think a fence would work better, then that's what they think would work better, right?
Right. Well, it's cost, and it's a maintenance issue going forward if we did a cedar-type fence or something like that.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have to maintain it, the solid Barbara comment.
Yeah. I guess my comment is, this is a federally assisted property. All operating funds come from the federal government through their 202 Section 8 program. And right now, we're already being told by the HUD office that funds are really being limited as far as operating expense increases and whatnot. So we know that potentially, maybe not this year, but the following year, our rents are going to be scrutinized to actually have reduced rents. And the -- this project is made possible by some funds that we have set aside over the past probably three to four years. And so those funds, effective November 1st of last year, where are now being -- property owners are being forced to use those for operating expenses. We got our request in just about six weeks prior to the federal notice. So I can tell you that going forward, there will be less funds available to maintain something like a fence, which led us to the option of natural landscaping. So a fence, especially a cedar fence, you know, is going to last, you know, maybe like five years before it needs some type of maintenance. So going forward, you know, I think the landowners would, you know, be more interested in having something that was maintenance-free, that would be less, you know, less burdensome to them to look at if it wasn't maintained to, in a fashion or at a level that they would choose to see. My other comment would be related to the parking. This is an elderly parking or elderly property, and most traffic, you know, leaves the property, I would say, after 7:00 or 8:00 in the morning, and most of the time by about 6:00, you know, 6:00, cars are pretty much parked there for the night. Our idea of the use of this additional spots are primarily for staff and visitors, and again, those would be taking place during normal business hours. So hopefully, there wouldn't be a lot of nighttime visitors to and from the property that would create, you know, lights into people's homes. The residents at Edendale don't like the dumpster at Eric's being dumped at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning either, you know. So it is not our intent to have anything like a dumpster in that area. The dumpster would remain where it is, which is on the west side of the property, along the church property line.
Okay. Thank you. Katie?
I have a question for Mr. Fransen. Being this be a, you know, living screen, say something does happen, like the previous trees that didn't make it, is there a bond requirement on this to have the trees replaced if they don't make it?
We do require surety for the landscaping that covers one full growing season. If the trees are properly installed and they're watered, we find that the success rate of putting in the trees is probably 95% to 99% in most of the cases. If they're done properly and you have the right contractor and they pick the right plant material and they install it properly. If there are some trees that didn't survive that one year, we simply make them go put those trees in. Once those are in, we release the surety. Long-term, if any of these new trees die, the city still has the ability to go out and say, replace the trees, because all properties in town, once they've had an approved plan, approved landscape plan, they're responsible for its long-term maintenance and health of all the plant material.
Okay. Well, back to the project proponent, what's the timing for starting your project? Do you have some flexibility, or do you have to start right away?
Well, we'd like to be able to start as early this spring as possible. So since we have an early spring, we were really hoping to start the project sometime in May.
Okay. And have you had direct contact with the property owner behind the lot?
Our property manager, Jane Bicker, sent out letters, and we held an informal neighborhood gathering, and some neighbors did come. I think the neighbor that has sent the letter was not able to come because they're wintering in a southern state.
Right.
But Ms. Bicker did have a phone conversation with the individual and tried to answer or address some of his concerns, basically the same concerns that were expressed in the letter.
I see. Okay. Well, any thoughts from commission members?
Is there one more question?
Sure. Absolutely.
I apologize. When you guys talked about overflow parking in Eric's, can you just give us an idea of numbers and how often you're there? And kind of, we're adding 22 spaces. Is that generally needed on a daily basis, or can you just walk us through that a little bit?
I would say that at least two to three staff people park on that property, along with a couple of visitors every day. Some of them are only there for maybe 15, 20 minutes. You know, two staff people are probably there, you know, four or five days a week from like 8:00 to 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock at the Eric's Bike Shop location. And the -- there are certain times when residents have more frequent visitors that, you know, require the use of that. But it's, a lot of it is short-term for that use of Eric's Bike Shop, because we know that they prefer that we do not park there.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I guess I have one more question. Mr. Fransen, the easement that Eric's has on the property was designated for future parking expansion?
Yes. That's a -- we checked the Hennepin County records, and that is a restriction on the certificate of title to the property, and that was filed back in '82 or '83. And that runs with this property indefinitely unless there's an agreement between the two properties that that could expire. They don't really need the parking for Eric's Bike Shop or where there was another retail use. They have enough parking to meet code. My guess is at the time they did the development, they might have been thinking about additions to the building where Eric's is, and then they would need the additional parking in the back.
Thank you. I'll just, I'll make a comment or two here, because this, to me, is a little bit of a frustrating situation. While I can't read too far into the documents, I do read a little bit into them, thinking that this was designated as a buffer zone, or at least there seems to be some indication that there, this might have been seen at the time as a bit of a buffer zone between the commercial and residential. And I think, I think to significantly impact that buffer zone is something I'd rather see us not do. On the other hand, I understand the right of the property owner to, you know, expand on their property. Just wish there seemed, there was some other compromise that would seem to be a better balance to maintain the intent of some sort of buffer there, and I think we lose some of the character of that buffer with this, you know, I was with Jake, Jake's thinking on the fence and something that would be, you know, a more intense buffer. And also, you know, the pity about the easement there, you know, you could solve some of those problems if that easement weren't an issue. I understand we have no control over that, so that's not really in play. So I guess I'm still kind of in that mode of, is there, is there a creative solution here that we haven't, we haven't gotten to? I think city, city staff adding additional screening is a very positive step and certainly one in the right direction. Is there, is there a step B that could be creative that wouldn't be onerous to the property owner, but also would, you know, reflect and honor some of the adjacent-- owner, but also would, you know, reflect and honor some of the adjacent homeowners' issues? So I don't have an answer there. I'm just kind of running on, but... Okay, very good.
Real quick, have you guys explored parking? It's a church to your immediate west, right? And I got to imagine that parking lot is pretty empty, especially on the weekdays. Have you guys explored that at all?
Well, we do use their parking lot when we have large events, like a couple of years ago, we had a 25-year anniversary open house, and we did approach the church about being able to use it. Part of the issue with that is that seniors and guests don't find that a very accommodating space, because there, you have to go out the driveway, down the street, about a block, before you go into the church parking lot. You can't just cut across because there's a berm there, and it's quite a steep grade from our parking lot in, in the front of the building or on the south side of the building to that church parking lot. And so for an 85-year-old person, that's not a very safe, you know, way for them to travel down something that doesn't have a sidewalk.
Yeah, I'm thinking about more long lines of having all staff park over there or something during the weekdays, because I got to imagine that's not very crowded over there. So, yeah, I certainly empathize with an 85-year-old crossing over a berm, but if there was a way to do it with people that it wouldn't affect that much, seems like a decent solution here, and could save you guys some money. Even a path, I don't know. I'm just thinking out loud here.
We've actually looked at that. At one point, we even approached the church about cutting through that berm. The grade is pretty significant, so in order to maintain, you know, from our parking lot down to their parking lot is a pretty good incline, so for, during winter months, for salt and sand, for safety, you know, reasons, it would be kind of, you know, it'd be difficult to maintain, you know, for the safety. But we did look at that, because we wanted to have a good partnership with the church, and we are, you know, so that residents, we do have residents that go to church there that they could travel without having to go out onto the street to go.
Well, can I make a suggestion? I think where the main resident that is impacted by this isn't here and isn't going to be for another week, that we should have an opportunity for them to have some direct input on this and to maybe have a meeting between you folks and that resident to talk about what they would prefer, a berm or taking all, which would require taking all of the trees out or a fence or additional landscaping, or what those options might be, and if there's a preference on location of the garage from adjacent to their property or away from their property, or those kinds of things. And I think that two weeks to do something like that shouldn't have that significant an impact on you folks. Would that be acceptable?
Yeah.
You'd prefer not to, but...
We'd prefer not to, but, you know, if that's what you're requiring, we'd be happy to meet with the owner.
All right. What do others think? I think it's a good idea.
I was just, sorry, I turned on my phone to look at the camera because I didn't have the paper one with me. The council meeting for this is going to be, so move fast enough, would be May 1st. So you certainly would have an opportunity to come back in a couple of weeks, see what can be worked on between then, and they would still be on their same council schedule.
Okay.
And if they get their approval at the council in May, they could still be starting some of their bidding work, construction work, you know, as soon as you're able to get the plant material, so...
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay. Well, can we encourage you folks then to meet with the property owner, have a discussion with them on what their preference might be for some sort of screening? Help them understand that they have the right to have a parking lot there, and so we want to encourage them to work with the property owner to screen it as best they can, but there probably will be a parking lot there, and that's their right to have that. Okay? Mr. Chairman, move to clo, oh, I'm sorry, move to recommend a continuance to the April 9th, 2012 meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimous, thank you. All right, that's it for public hearings today. Thank you to the project proponent, and have a good meeting with them, and then come back to the city and show us what you come up with on April 9th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Planner's report, Mr. Franz.
I have nothing this evening.
Wow. Members' report. Continuing business. New business. Motion to adjourn?
Move adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're done.